Good morning, General.
Good morning, Senator.
General, I'm looking at this letter from one of your U.S. attorneys from October this year, where he wrote to the Montana Attorney General, all the county attorneys and all the sheriffs in his jurisdiction, suggesting ways that parents could be prosecuted at school board mayor, for appearing at school board meetings in accordance with your directive. And one of the suggestions made by your U.S. attorney is parents can be prosecuted for repeated telephone calls. Not threatening anyone, just on the theory that repeated telephone calls could be harassment. Really?
Senator, I haven't seen that memorandum. I've tried to express as clearly as I can here.
I heard you, General, but this is one of your U.S. attorneys.
Again, I haven't seen...
Isn't that special? General, you're just a vessel. Let me tell you what I'm talking about. With respect to the National School Boards Association letter, you're just a vessel, aren't you?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but I signed this memorandum. I worked on this memorandum, and this memorandum is my memorandum.
Well, let me tell you what I mean. We know that the National School Board Association was upset because parents were coming to school board meetings to object to the teaching of critical race theory. We know that in drafting the letter, the National School Board Association collaborated with the White House for several weeks. They worked on it together. And we know that the National School Board Association wants the White House and the association were happy with the letter. The National School Board Association sent the letter to the White House, and the White House promptly called you and said, sic the FBI on parents at school board hearings. And that's what I mean. The White House is the prophet here. Yours is the vessel, isn't that correct?
Senator, I did not speak with anyone from the White House as while I worked on this memorandum. This memorandum reflects my views that we need to protect public officials from violence and threats of violence while at the same time protecting parents' ability to object to policies...
Right. I get that. I've heard your testimony. Were you worried that you would be fired if you didn't issue the memorandum?
Senator, I'm not... I decided on this memorandum on my own. I don't care. I said from the very beginning, I've taken this job to protect the Department of Justice, to make independent determinations with respect to prosecutions and investigations, and I will do that.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt, General, but I don't have much time. Now, when you got the letter from the White House that prompted your memorandum to give the FBI new duties and making sure our parents aren't dangerous domestic terrorists, you didn't investigate before you issued your memorandum the incidences cited in the letter, did you?
Look, I took a statement by the National Association, which represents thousands of school board members, when they said that they were facing violence and threats of violence, and when I saw in the news media reports...
Yeah, but you didn't investigate the incidents in the letter, did you?
No. This is the first step. This is an assessment step. It comes before investigations.
Right. Before you issued your memo, you didn't investigate the incidents.
The memo is intended to begin assessments. It is intended to add...
And in fact, most of the incidents in the letter did not involve threats of violence, did they?
I think that's correct. Most of them did not, and they would not be covered by either federal or state law. I agree with that, and they would be protected by the First Amendment. But threats of violence are not covered by the...
Can we agree that we have thousands, tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of kids growing up today who are more likely to commit a crime than, and go to jail than on the home and get married?
I don't know about the comparative statistics. I do know there are too many people who are committing crimes.
And one of the reasons for that is lack of parental involvement, isn't it?
I think parental involvement is essential. I think it's the key both to bringing up good kids.
So why do you want to issue a memorandum listing incidents that you didn't investigate? That anybody who has any fair-minded knowledge of the world knows is going to have a chilling effect on parental involvement with respect to what their kids are learning at school?
I just want to be clear again, Senator. My memorandum did not list any of those incidents.
Come on, General. We both know this had a chilling effect. You don't think their parents out there in the real world that said, oh, my God, maybe we shouldn't go to the school board meeting? There'll be FBI agents there? We can live in... We're sitting in la la land.
I tried to make clear, as clear as I could, and now I have subsequently made clear in every public statement on the matter...
Your actions made it clear, General. Let me...
His opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chairman just said the Trump DOJ was political and went after their opponents. Are you kidding me? Three weeks ago, the National School Board Association writes President Biden, asking him to involve the FBI in local school board matters. Five days later, the Attorney General of the United States does just that, does exactly what a political organization asks to be done. Five days. We've sent, Republicans on this committee have sent the Attorney General 13 letters in the last six months. Takes weeks and months to get a response. Eight of the letters, we've got nothing. They just gave us the finger, saying, we're not going to get back to you. And all our letters were actually sent to the Attorney General. Here's a letter sent to someone else, asking for a specific thing to be done, and in five days, the Attorney General does it. Here's what the October 4th memo said. Quote, "I'm directing the FBI to convene meetings with local leaders. These meetings will open dedicated lines of communication for threat reporting." Dedicated lines of communication for threat reporting. A snitch line on parents started five days after a left-wing political organization asked for it. That's not political. I don't know what is. Where's the dedicated lines of communication with local leaders regarding our southern border? Something that frankly is a federal matter. Where's the dedicated lines of communication on violent crime in our cities? Violent crime, that has went up in every major urban area where Democrats have defunded the police. Nope, can't do that. Can't do that. The Biden Justice Department is going to go after parents who object to some racist hate America curriculum. Nope, can't focus on the southern border, where 1.7 million illegal encounters have happened this year alone. A record. A record number. MS-13 can just waltz right across the border, but the Department of Justice, they're going to open up a snitch line on parents. Think about this. The same FBI that Mr. Garland is directing to open dedicated lines of communication for reporting on parents just a few years ago spied on four American citizens associated with President Trump's campaign. Clinton campaign hired Perkins Coie, who hired Fusion GPS, who hired Christopher Steele, who put a bunch of garbage together, gave it to the FBI. They used that as the basis to open up an investigation into a presidential campaign. Oh, and then there was Mr. Zussman. Mr. Zussman, who worked at Perkins Coie, the firm hired by the Clinton campaign, he cut out all the middlemen. He just said, I'm just going to go directly to the FBI, and not just anyone at the FBI. Who'd he go to? Jim Baker, the chief counsel at the FBI, handed him a bunch of false information, told him false information, and of course, he's been indicted by the special counsel. A few weeks ago, the IG at the Department of Justice released a report that found that the FBI made over 200 errors, omissions, and lies in just 29 randomly-selected FISA applications. But don't worry, the Attorney General of the United States just put them in charge of a dedicated line of communication to report on parents who attend school board meetings. Mr. Chairman, Americans are afraid. For the first time during my years in public office, first time, I talked to the good folks, I get the privilege of representing in the 4th District of Ohio, folks all around the country, they tell me, for the first time, they fear their government. And frankly, I think it's obviously why. Every single liberty we enjoy under the First Amendment has been assaulted over the last year. Stop and think about it. Americans were told you couldn't go to church, couldn't go to work, couldn't go to school. Small business owners were told, you're not an essential business, close your doors, causing many of them to go bankrupt. We were given curfews, stay-at-home orders. Last fall in Ohio, you had to be in your home at 10:00. In Pennsylvania, when you were in your home, you had to wear a mask. In Vermont, when you were in your home, you didn't have to wear a mask because you weren't allowed to have friends and family over. And of course, there's always a double standard with these folks. Folks who make the rules never seem to follow them. And now the Biden administration says, get a vaccine or lose your job. Even if you've had COVID and have natural immunity, get a vaccine or you will lose your job. Oh, I almost forgot. The Biden administration also wants another dedicated line of communication for reporting. They want a second snitch line. They want banks to report on every single transaction over $600 for every single American to the IRS. The IRS, that agency with its stellar record of customer service, the IRS, you know, the same IRS that targeted conservatives the last time Joe Biden was in the executive branch. Jefferson said once, tyranny is when the people fear the government. We're there. Sadly, we are there, but I don't think, I don't think the good people, I don't think the good people of this great country are going to cower and hide. I think your memo, Mr. Attorney General, was the last straw. I think it was the catalyst for a great awakening that is just getting started. Pilots at Southwest Airlines, the Chicago Police Union, parents at school board meetings, Americans are pushing back because Americans value freedom. A few weeks ago, a few weeks ago, Terry McAuliffe said this, "I don't think parents should be telling schools what to teach." When government tells parents, we're smarter than you, Americans aren't going to tolerate it. When the Attorney General of the United States sets up a snitch line on parents, Americans aren't going to tolerate it. I think they're going to stand up to this accelerated march to communism that we now see. America's going to fight the good fight. They're going to finish the course. They're going to keep the faith because Americans value freedom. Mr. Chairman, we have a video we'd like to play.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For eight years under Barack Obama, the Department of Justice was politicized and weaponized. When you came before this committee in your confirmation hearing, you promised things would be different. I asked you specifically, quote, "Will you commit to this committee that under your leadership, the Department of Justice will not target the political opponents of this administration?" Here was your answer, quote, "Absolutely. It's totally inappropriate for the Department to target any individual because of their politics or their position in a campaign." That was your promise just a few months ago. I'm sorry to say you have broken that promise. There is a difference between law and politics. And General Garland, you know the difference between law and politics. Law is based on facts. It is impartial. It is not used as a tool of political retribution. This memo was not law. This memo was politics. On Wednesday, September 29th, the National School Board Association wrote a letter to the President asking the President to use the Department of Justice to target parents that were upset at critical race theory, that were upset at mask mandates in schools, to target them as domestic terrorists. On the face of the letter, the letter was, in repeated consultation with the White House, an explicit political consultation with the White House. That was on Wednesday, September 29th. Five days later, on Monday, so right after the weekend, boom, you pop out a memo giving them exactly what they want. Now, by the way, I understand that. In politics, that happens all the time. An important special interest wants something? Sir, yes, sir. We're going to listen to them. Let me ask you something, General Garland. In the letter, which you told the House of Representatives was the basis for this abusive memo targeting parents, how many incidents are cited in that memo?
I have to look back through the memo. I can't count it.
You don't know. How many of them are violent?
Again, the general report...
How many of them were violent? Do you know?
I don't know.
You don't know. There's a reason you don't know. Because you didn't care, and nobody in your office cared to find out. I did a quick count, just sitting here. During this hearing, I counted 20 incidents cited. Of the 20, 15 on their face are nonviolent. They involve things like insults. They involve a Nazi salute. That's one of the examples. My God, a parent did a Nazi salute at a school board because he thought the policies were oppressive. General Garland is doing a Nazi salute on an elected official. Is that protected by the First Amendment?
Yes, it is.
Okay. 15 of the 20 on the face of it are not violent. They're not threats of violence. They're parents who are unhappy. Yet miraculously, when you write a memo, the opening line of your memo, "In recent months, there has been a disturbing spike in harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence." You know what? You didn't look, and nobody on your staff looked. Did you even look up the 20 instances?
As I testified, the decision to make, send a memo, is for an assessment...
Did you look up the 20 instances?
I did not read...
Did anyone on your staff look them up?
I don't know the answer, but it's not only the memo.
But of course you don't. And, General, there's a reason. Look, you started your career as a law clerk to Justice Brennan. You've had many law clerks during the year, during your time as a judge. I was a clerk to Chief Justice Rehnquist. I'll tell you what. If I drafted an opinion for the Chief Justice and walked in and it said, there's a disturbing pattern of violence, well, Ted, how do you know that? Well, I got an amicus brief here who claims it. You would fire a law clerk who did that. You're the Attorney General of the United States. This was not a tweet you sent. This is a memo to the Federal Bureau of Investigations saying, go investigate parents as domestic terrorists.
That is not what the memo says at all. It does not...
Is it what the letter says?
That is not what...
Is it what the letter says?
I don't care what the letter says. What I care...
You don't care. You said it was the basis of your memo. You testified under oath before the House of Representatives, the letter was the basis of your memo. Now you don't care about the letter?
The letter and public reports of violence and threats of violence, my memo says nothing about domestic terrorism, says nothing about parents committing any such things. My memo is an attempt to get an assessment of whether there is a problem out there that the federal government needs to...
The letter on its face says the actions of the parents could be the equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism.
And that is wrong.
And asks the President to use the Patriot Act in regards to domestic terrorism, directed at parents. This was the basis of your memo.
My memo...
The Department of Justice, when you're directing the FBI to engage in law enforcement, you're not behaving as a political operative because a political ally of the President says, hey, go attack these parents because we don't like what they're saying. Department of Justice, you did no independent research on what was happening, did you?
The memo has nothing to do with partisan...
Did you do independent research?
The memo has...
Did you do independent research?
The memo has nothing to do with partisan politics.
You've testified you know nothing about the violent sexual assault that happened in Loudoun County, even though it's one of the bases in this letter.
I read about it since then.
Okay? You told the House last week you knew nothing about it.
Not know at the time. No...
Okay. This week, the court concluded that a 14-year-old girl was violently raped by a boy wearing a skirt in the girls' restroom. The school district covered it up, released the boy, sent him to another school where he violently raped another girl. The father, who Mr. Hawley just showed you, was the father of the first girl, he was understandably... Do you understand why a parent would be upset when your daughter is raped at school, the school board covers it up, and then lies to you and claims there have been no assaults, we have no instances of assaults in our bathroom? And that was a flat-out lie, as the court concluded this week. Do you understand why the parent would be upset?
Absolutely, and any expressions of upset are completely protected by the First Amendment.
Except you just called him a domestic terrorist.
I never called him that. That's not correct.
This letter calls him a domestic terrorist. You based a direction to the FBI, an official direction from the Attorney General, on this letter. And I'll tell you what, the NSBA is so embarrassed of this letter, they've apologized for it and retracted it, but you don't apparently have the same willingness to apologize and retract what you...
Good morning, General.
Good morning, Senator.
General, I'm looking at this letter from one of your U.S. attorneys from October this year where he wrote to the Montana Attorney General, all the county attorneys and all the sheriffs in his jurisdiction, suggesting ways that parents could be prosecuted at school board mayor, for appearing at school board meetings in accordance with your directive. And one of the suggestions made by your U.S. attorney is parents can be prosecuted for repeated telephone calls. Not threatening anyone, just on the theory that repeated telephone calls could be harassment. Really?
Senator, I haven't seen that memorandum. I've tried to express as clearly as I can here.
I heard you, General, but this is one of your U.S. attorneys.
Again, I haven't seen...
Isn't that special? General, you're just a vessel. Let me tell you what I'm talking about. With respect to the National School Boards Association letter, you're just a vessel, aren't you?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but I signed this memorandum. I worked on this memorandum, and this memorandum is my memorandum.
Well, let me tell you what I mean. We know that the National School Board Association was upset because parents were coming to school board meetings to object to the teaching of critical race theory. We know that in drafting the letter, the National School Board Association collaborated with the White House for several weeks. They worked on it together. And we know that the National School Board Association wants the White House and the association were happy with the letter. The National School Board Association sent the letter to the White House, and the White House promptly called you and said, sic the FBI on parents at school board hearings. And that's what I mean. The White House is the prophet here. Yours is the vessel, isn't that correct?
Senator, I did not speak with anyone from the White House as while I worked on this memorandum. This memorandum reflects my views that we need to protect public officials from violence and threats of violence while at the same time protecting parents' ability to object to policies...
Right. I get that. I've heard your testimony. Were you worried that you would be fired if you didn't issue the memorandum?
Senator, I'm not... I decided on this memorandum on my own. I don't care. I said from the very beginning, I've taken this job to protect the Department of Justice, to make independent determinations with respect to prosecutions and investigations, and I will do that.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt, General, but I don't have much time. Now, when you got the letter from the White House that prompted your memorandum to give the FBI new duties and making sure our parents aren't dangerous domestic terrorists, you didn't investigate before you issued your memorandum the incidences cited in the letter, did you?
Look, I took a statement by the National Association, which represents thousands of school board members, when they said that they were facing violence and threats of violence, and when I saw in the news media reports...
Yeah, but you didn't investigate the incidents in the letter, did you?
No. This is the first step. This is an assessment step. It comes before investigations.
Right. Before you issued your memo, you didn't investigate the incidents.
The memo is intended to begin assessments. It is intended to add...
And in fact, most of the incidents in the letter did not involve threats of violence, did they?
I think that's correct. Most of them did not, and they would not be covered by either federal or state law. I agree with that, and they would be protected by the First Amendment. But threats of violence are not covered by the...
Can we agree that we have thousands, tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of kids growing up today who are more likely to commit a crime than, and go to jail than on the home and get married?
I don't know about the comparative statistics. I do know there are too many people who are committing crimes.
And one of the reasons for that is lack of parental involvement, isn't it?
I think parental involvement is essential. I think it's the key both to bringing up good kids.
So why do you want to issue a memorandum listing incidents that you didn't investigate? That anybody who has any fair-minded knowledge of the world knows is going to have a chilling effect on parental involvement with respect to what their kids are learning at school?
I just want to be clear again, Senator. My memorandum did not list any of those incidents.
Come on, General. We both know this had a chilling effect. You don't think their parents out there in the real world that said, oh, my God, maybe we shouldn't go to the school board meeting? There'll be FBI agents there? We can live in... We're sitting in la la land.
I tried to make clear, as clear as I could, and now I have subsequently made clear in every public statement on the matter...
Your actions made it clear, General. Let me ask you one last question. When men follow a United States senator who happens to be a female into a women's room to harass her about her beliefs, why is that just part of the process, as President Biden says? But when a parent goes to a school board meeting to protest that her child is being taught that babies can be white supremacists is subject to FBI prosecution?
The description that you just gave, that parent is not subject to FBI investigation. There's nothing in this memorandum that suggests this. We protect United States senators against threats of violence.
You did a good job with Senator Sinema.
Within the last month, we have indicted somebody who made threats of violence against both Alaska U.S. senators. Recently, we just issued, we just indicted somebody else who made threats of violence.
Can I ask one more, Mr. Chairman?
Can you wrap up, please, Senator Kennedy?
I'm sorry?
Could you wrap up? I am chairing this...
Oh, yes, ma'am. I will. I'm just going to ask one last one. What led you to conclude before you issued your memorandum siccing the FBI on parents that law enforcement at the state and local level couldn't handle it?
Let me be clear, Senator. We did not sic the FBI on parents. That's not what this memorandum is about, nor did we conclude that local law enforcement is unable to deal with the problem. The purpose of this memorandum is for our federal law enforcement to engage with state and local and determine whether they need assistance.
And you don't think this had any chilling effect whatsoever on parents out there?
The memorandum expressly says at the beginning that it is aimed at violence and threats of violence, and expressly says that robust public debate about school policies are protected.
Right, right. Well, I like you, General, a lot, but on this issue, you've turned into someone you said you wouldn't be.
I recognize Senator...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Attorney General Garland, on October 4th, you issued an unprecedented memo that involves the Department of Justice and the FBI and local school districts, local school boards. Nothing like it in our country's history. It was based, you've testified, on this letter from the National School Board Association that we now know the White House was involved in writing. They've retracted the letter. They've apologized for the letter. They say they regret the letter, but you won't retract the memo, and said earlier that you have no regrets. And you've defended yourself repeatedly today before this committee by saying, well, you're focused on violence. But now, of course, we've seen the memo from your own Justice Department advising state and local and other prosecutors about all of the different federal causes of action. and local and other prosecutors about all of the different federal causes of action that they can bring against parents that are not about violence, they're about harassment and intimidation. I'm looking here at this memo. It identifies no fewer than 13 possible federal crimes involving harassment and intimidation, including making annoying phone calls. Do you think a parent who makes a phone call to a school board member that she has elected, that that school board member deems annoying should be prosecuted, General Garland?
No, I don't, and the Supreme Court has made quite clear that the word intimidation with respect to the constitutional protection, it's one that directs a threat to a person with the intent of placing the victim in fear of bodily harm or death. Prosecutors who investigate these cases know the Supreme Court's, this is a very famous eating cake.
Prosecutors do, but, but parents don't, General Garland. Do you think that a parent who looks at the 13 different federal crimes that your Justice Department has identified, they might be subject to and prosecuted for, like making annoying phone calls? Do you think that they're going to feel that they're welcome to speak up at a school board meeting? How about this one? They could be prosecuted for using the internet, I guess that would be Facebook, in a way that might cause emotional distress to a victim. Is that, is that a crime of violence?
Senator, I haven't seen the memo that you're talking about.
Why haven't you?
And I don't, and even from the description, it doesn't sound like it was addressed to parents, but if you...
No, it wasn't addressed to parents, it was addressed to prosecutors, that's the problem. Why haven't you seen the memo?
I don't know why I haven't, I don't look at every, I do not get every memo that every U.S. attorney sends out, but if you're...
Wait, wait a minute, don't, I just want to be sure I understand this. This, this is a memorandum that collects 13 different federal crimes parents could be charged with. It has United States Department of Justice on the top of it, and you're telling me you haven't seen it?
Who's the memo from, Senator?
The United States Department of Justice, United States Attorney for the District of Montana.
I have not seen a memo from the District of Montana.
Not high enough priority for you?
That's not, that's not the question, I don't...
It is the question, answer my question. Is it not a high enough priority for you when you're threatening parents with 13 different federal crimes? These aren't crimes of violence. You've testified today, you're focused on violence. That's not what your U.S. attorneys, they work for you, that's not what they're saying. You haven't seen it because it's not a high enough priority, or what?
Question of priority, no one has sent me that memo, so I haven't seen it.
What do you mean, no one has sent you the memo? You run the United States Department of Justice, do you not?
There are 115,000 employees of the Department of Justice.
Indeed, and you are in charge of every one of them. And this was a sufficiently important case that you issued a memo. You, over your signature, issued a memo involving the FBI and the Department of Justice in local school boards, local school districts. Your U.S. attorneys are now threatening prosecution with 13 different crimes, but it's not a high enough priority for you? It got lost in the mix?
I'll send again. I've never seen that memo.
That's what concerns me, General Garland.
Well, it wasn't sent to me. I hope you will assure your constituents that what we are concerned about here is violence and threats of violence.
That only leads me to conclude, General Garland, all I can conclude from this is either that you're not in control of your own department, or that, more likely, what I think to be the case, is that you knew full well that this is exactly the kind of thing that would happen. When you issued your memo, when you involved the Department of Justice and all of its resources, and the FBI and all of its resources, in local school boards and local school districts, you knew that federal prosecutors would start collecting crimes that they could use against parents. You knew they would advise state and local officials that these are all of the ways parents might be prosecuted. You knew that that was the likely outcome, and that's exactly what's happened. And we're talking about parents like Scott Smith, who's behind me, over my shoulder. This is a father from Loudoun County, Virginia. Here he is at a school board meeting. He was forcibly restrained, he was assaulted, he was arrested. Why? Because he went to an elected school board meeting, he's a voter, by the way, he went to an elected school board meeting to raise the fact that his daughter was assaulted, sexually assaulted, in a girls' restroom by a boy. This is what happened to him. Now, you testified last week before the House that you didn't know anything about this case. I find that extraordinary because the letter that you put so much weight on, the letter that's now been retracted, it cites this case, it cites Mr. Scott's case directly. There's a news article cited in the letter, it's discussed in the letter, but you testified you just couldn't remember it. Maybe this will refresh your memory. Do you think people like Scott Smith, you think parents who show up to complain about their children being assaulted ought to be treated like this man right here?
Parents who show up to complain about school boards are protected by the First Amendment.
Do you think that they ought to be prosecuted in the different ways that your U.S. attorneys are identifying?
If what they're doing is complaining about what the school board is doing, policies, curriculum, anything else that they want to, as long as they're not committing threats of violence, then they should not be prosecuted, and they can't be.
Let me ask you about this. Several of my Democrat colleagues have today, just today in this hearing, multiple times have compared parents who show up at school board meetings, like Mr. Smith here, have compared them to criminal rioters. You think that's right? You think that a parent who shows up at a school board meeting, who has a complaint, who wants to voice that complaint, and maybe she doesn't use exactly the right grammar, you think they're akin to criminal rioters? Do you agree with that?
I do not, and I do not remember any senator here comparing, making that comparison.
Oh, really? These people are just like the folks who came here on January 6th and in the riot at the Capitol?
I don't think it, they were referring to the picture that you're showing there.
Well, I certainly would hope not, but they were referring to parents who go to school board meetings. Mr. Smith is a parent who went to a school board meeting. I'll leave it at this, General Garland, you have weaponized the FBI and the Department of Justice. Your U.S. attorneys are now collecting and cataloging all the ways that they might prosecute parents like Mr. Smith because they want to be involved in their children's education, and they want to have a say in their elected officials. It's wrong, it is unprecedented, to my knowledge, in the history of this country, and I call on you to resign. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Cruz.